Council meeting, it's hybrid. And I would like to call on Councilman Ray Teicher. Patient and the pledge, please.
Please stand if you are able. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Ray Teicher. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Hennigan, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're about to give a special presentation, a life-saving award to Mr. Kim McGrady, Colton McGrady, and Preston Lynn by the South Walton Fire District. Joining us in the room is those named, as well as LeAnn Colton. And off to the right or on my right is Jeff Moss. He's a Dunwoody resident. He's the deputy chief of the Morrow Fire Department. On April 8th, Dunwoody resident Kim McGrady made the ultimate sacrifice at Maramar Beach, Florida, began what would turn into an 11-person rescue from red flag conditions. The 17-year-old son, Colton, and another friend, Preston Lynn, were also involved in dragging people from rip current conditions to safety. Ultimately, Kim and a 21-year-old boy from Louisiana went from rescuers to victims and could not survive the strength of the rip currents. Kim managed to swim out in the current and return three people before going after a fourth person and needing to help himself. And that Colton and Preston were also free swimming in the current and grabbing the folks that Kim was bringing into shallower water. With these details, Chief Orick and the South Walton Fire District would like to present the life-saving coin to Kim McGrady, Colton McGrady, and Preston Lynn for saving the lives of so many on April 8th, 2021. Eleven people total required rescuing that day on Maramar Beach, and nine people are here today because of the actions of these men. Do we have South Walton Fire Department online?
We do. Good afternoon or good evening, council members. Council, I appreciate you giving us the opportunity and mayor to present this award to these individuals today. I have a short statement to read. On April 8th, 2021, at 16:54 hours, SWFD responded to reports of a water rescue in progress on the beach in front of Seascape condominiums. A strong rip current was present in Seascape area with multiple rescues noted throughout the area. The initial response included Engine 5, Rescue 5, Beach 3, Rover 53, Rover 54. The initial 911 reported approximately 20 people in the water in distress. This incident began with a few swimmers in distress until bystanders formed a human rescue chain with swimmers. The incident resulted in a total of 11 patients. South Walton Fire District core values include teamwork. We all know well-functioning teams of people are more efficient than individuals working separately and that our lives depend on it. We believe individuals have the capability to lead, and our organization values teamwork at all levels. We recognize that teamwork is more than South Walton Fire Department and that community involvement is essential to protect our community. South Walton Fire District honors community members and first responders for their efforts to save a life. This honor is corumated with South Walton Fire District Life Saving Challenge Point. Challenge points have a long history of being used in military personnel, and there is evidence that the Roman Empire gave challenge points to their ranks to recognize their achievements in battle and in performance. Challenge points have been used in the American military role where once to recognize camaraderie and exceptional performance. South Walton Fire Life Saving Coin represents two longstanding symbols in the fire service. First, the SWFD coin is South Walton Fire District logo utilizing the fire service Maltese cross. The Maltese cross originated in the 11th century with the Order of Saint John. The Maltese cross was worn by the Knights of Malta, a group of soldiers that protected the Crusaders. The back of the coin features the Star of Life design symbol of EMS in 1967. The back of the coin features the Star of Life, I'm sorry, the coin, the six branches of symbolize the main tasks provided in the EMS medical services, detection, reporting, response, on-scene care, care and transit, and transfer of definitive care. Together, this Maltese cross and the Star of Life symbolizes the history and commitment it takes to save a life. On this day, May 10th, the South Walton Fire District would like to honor Kim McGrady, Colton McGrady, Preston Lynn with the SWFD Challenge Coin for their heroic efforts during the rescue of people in a dangerous rip current on April 2021. South Walton Fire District thanks you for your leadership and commitment, and the chief has the coins to present to you now. Thank you.
Okay, thank y'all. I'll add just a couple of things very quickly. First of all, it is a great privilege to be here to honor this family and Preston, as well as McGrady's and Preston, and I'm very honored to be here to have a chance to do this. Colton and Preston, you've got to experience something that many people in this life never will, you saved a life. And it's something that you'll carry with you for the rest of your life, that you will remember. And I hope all of you to understand, LeAnn, Kaylee, as well, the ripple effect of what's happened here. I often tell people that I work with, you saved a life, but you saved many other lives to come along with it because you don't know what these people are going to do in the future. So it's not one life that you save, but the ripple effect goes on and on for years and generations. So the things that you have done that day, they were brave, they were selfless. We're very honored to be here to do this and to celebrate it. It's a very happy day, and I hope that you take great pride in what you did. We all take great pride as a community in what you've done to represent us. We appreciate it, and I hope these coins just provide a reminder each and every day when you see these of what each of you did and what Kim did on that day and how selfless that was and brave. There's only one word, and it's a hero for all of you. So thank you for your service and have each of you a point.
I've been asked to say a few words. At the end of a man's life, what will they say about him? A legacy is etched into the minds of others in the stories they share about you. Based on the amount of people touched by Kim, his legacy will endure. Kaylee, Colton, your father's legacy will live on through you and eventually your children. Your father touched so many people through 20 years of living in Dunwoody, coaching at Murphy Cantler, working at Chick-fil-A, counseling young married couples with your mom, and honoring God by doing those things that served him and others. He built his life around love, virtue, kindness, and generosity. Therefore, it is no surprise that while relaxing on the beach, he was called into service one last time, which would then also etch his legacy on the souls he saved. On that day, I believe God welcomed Kim with more than a legacy as bestowed by man, but instead he welcomed him home into immortal glory. Well done, my good and faithful servant. LeAnn, you are loved by this community. If you or your family would like to say a few words, what is yours?
Hello. On behalf of my mom, my brother, and I, we just wanted to say a big thank you to the Dunwoody community for the love and support, for the beautiful white bows, for the dinners and the flowers and all the donations, including this to St. Jude. We also wanted to thank the Dunwoody baseball communities of both Murphy Cantler and Dunwoody High School for the great honors of my father. We want to thank the City Council of Dunwoody for having us here tonight, as well as the South Walton Fire Department for bestowing the honors and recognizing my dad and my brother and Preston. And we just know that there's an immeasurable amount of people to thank today, and we just want to extend our thanks to everyone for everything that we've done and all the prayers and support. Thank you.
And I would like to just thank everyone who worked to make this possible for us to share with the community at a city council meeting. So thank you to all involved. Is my sound okay? Can you hear me? Okay.
Yes, Lynn, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. It is time for public comment. I have Robert Walford. I don't know if he's in person or online. He's here. Okay. Mr. Walford, you will approach, please, and you will have three minutes.
May I remove my mask? Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you can remove your mask.
Give them a moment to clear the room.
That's fine, Robert.
That's fine. I'm sorry, I can't see.
That's okay.
Pretty much. So yeah, we can wait till the room is clear. That's fine.
Thank you.
Just start, Robert, when it is. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, I think we're good now. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. My name is Robert Walford. The police and the judges call me Robert, but you all can call me Bob. I'd like, I would like the Dunwoody City Council to establish a public safety committee or commission or board made up of citizens from our community to advise the council on all matters of public safety in Dunwoody. To quote our City of Dunwoody website, "The City of Dunwoody believes citizens bring valuable insights to the complex process of governance and are skilled, a skilled resource to our community." "The mayor and city council encourage all citizens to consider becoming involved in city government by serving in an advisory role on a board, commission, or committee," end quote. "It is, it is time for the City of Dunwoody to take actions on the complex issues of policing, race relations, community safety, mental health, code enforcement, social justice, and other issues directly related to public safety. Now is the time to establish this forum open to the public and meeting regularly to discuss and consider and recommend actions that our city can take to improve policing and public, public safety in Dunwoody. Much the same way, our planning commission meets to provide the public with an opportunity to review rezoning requests, code text amendments, special land use permit requests, and other zoning decisions, and our sustainability committee meets to discuss issues and make recommendations on sustainability-related relegation, regulations, plans, initiatives. Both of these committees and commissions work with city staff to implement policies and procedures while also providing public education and outreach on planning and sustainability, sustainability issues. We need the same kind of public forum for policing and public safety here in Dunwoody. It is time for Dunwoody to act on issue, on the issues of public concern regarding policing and public safety in Dunwoody. I trust this council will give thoughtful consideration to the idea of creating a public safety commission or public safety committee. I look forward to the day very soon when I can log on to the Dunwoody city website to find out when the first Dunwoody Public Safety Meeting will take place. And a final thought, it's quite clear that that committee would need to be diverse.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you, Ginger. It is very important, or Brittany, it is very important that any public committee or commission established be controlled and conducted by the citizens and not the police or city officials, much the same way the planning commission's sustainability are. My final recommendation, which I'll be providing in writing to this council, is I'd like to go ahead and recommend that two of my neighbors, Lydia Singleton and Joe Hirsch, be nominated to serve on that committee when it's appropriately appointed. Thank you. Good night, and as always, good luck.
Thank you. Is anyone out, are there cards?
Madam Mayor, we have Mr. Denny Shorel was filled out a card.
Okay, thank you.
Denny, can you please come, Denny Shorel?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
Before I get started, can you hear me good enough through this thing?
Yes.
Before I just like to compliment that family, wow, a lot of people talk about others above self, but this man lived it and right to the bitter end. And boy, what a hero. But anyway, Mayor, remotely, council members, good to see you all again. Belated, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers here today. It looks like there's a few of us, not of, sorry, a few of you. And also all the mothers here in our great city of Dunwoody. I want to thank the council and the staff for the greenery underneath the power line there on Mount Vernon. That really adds a lot to the beautification of our city. And also, if and when the money becomes available, it'd be a great idea wherever the power line crosses major thoroughfares in our city. Also, thanks for, on behalf of the business owners of the village, for moving the art festival to Brook Run Park. Everybody said it would be the end of it, but as you noticed over the weekend, I think they had record crowds. The main purpose here tonight, I just want to talk about the, the purchase of the property on Burmec. You know, you hear a lot of talk about park acres, and park acres are important, but they're not nearly as important as quality park acres, and that's, I think, very much the key. And the acres, in other words, acres with a purpose. You know, right down, four blocks down the street from this park, there's a park called the Donaldson-Bannister Park. And if you turn left on Shambly-Dunwoody Road and go a quarter of a mile, there's another nice park there. So it doesn't really fit a need in this part of town, the way I see it. Transparency has been a keynote of this council and this city since even before we became a city. And the thing I think we need to be is very transparent about all the factors on the cost of this to the citizens. The citizens need to be informed. You know, you can do it on the Friday mail-out, you can do it in the paper, you can do it, but you need to inform, I think, all the citizens on the details, like total cost of the land, what's the cost of the interest rate, the interest cost, and what is the interest rate going to be? I know you don't know exactly, but I bet you know within one or two tenths of a percentage point. Capital improvement, what's a park going to be used for? What's the capital improvement cost? Where is that going to come from? The annual O and M cost, you know, it's going to be there forever, and as the more improvements you make on it, the O and M.
Thirty seconds remaining.
Thank you. And 10-year annual payments, I look at it at about $600,000 a year. Where's that money coming from when the budget, I know, is very tight? You've been, you've cut back on it, and also, it's been one of those factors that, you know, is going to continue to be with us. So I know there's no surplus. Opportunity costs lost, build 30 apartment homes at a million bucks a pop. And, you know, some people compare that to the purchase of this, but after seven years here, the citizens are saving money for us moving here. So thank you for your consideration. Please inform the citizens. Have a great evening. Don't take any wood nickels in life.
Let me turn yourself. Leave it on?
Yes, please, please leave it on. All right. Are there any other cards?
Lynn, there's no other cards.
Okay. Ginger, can you check online, please?
If you would like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
Thank you. We will move on to proclamations, and I believe Debbie Shudelman is there. Is that correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor, they're going to be walking in in two seconds. They went up to get the crowd.
Okay. No worries. Thank you.
Lynn, they are filing into the room as we speak.
Okay. When Debbie is ready, she can just go to the podium. So Debbie, whenever you're ready, whenever they're ready, feel free to start. No rush.
I think we got all the parents in now. I was told that the proclamation is to be read first, or you want the presentation?
Yes, I'll read that, Mayor. This is Sharon. I'll read the proclamation if you're ready.
Great. Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome. Whereas Isabel Izzy Bolt, Masha Svetkovich, Alexandra Dupree, Sophia Dewberry, Elizabeth Hanian, Braden Harrison, Maddie Heron, Suzanne Levy, Alexander Marcus, Ansley Racine, and Kristen Warren are members of the STO team at Chestnut Elementary School. And whereas the STO team from Chestnut Elementary School is on a mission to save that ocean. And whereas they had a third-grade steam unit on pollution and learned about recycling, reusing, and reducing the trash in our environment. And whereas they learned about the Great Pacific Garbage Patch and how this garbage was directly affecting the animals that live in the ocean. And whereas during a discussion at lunch when they were in the fourth grade, they decided to have a recycling challenge. And whereas they had the support of their teachers, Beth Norado and Stacia Brown. And whereas they were fired up and ready to make a difference, no matter how small. And whereas they began their next school year presenting their idea to the faculty and staff at Chestnut Elementary School and creating a recycling challenge for the whole school, which they successfully managed. And whereas they conducted fundraising activities, including a Bakesdale, a lemonade stand, a raffle, and a hot cider sale. And whereas these activities raised over $1,000. And whereas these funds were used for recycling bins at their school, a donation to the Georgia Aquarium, and a donation to the Georgia Sea Turtle Center on Jekyll Island to adopt Jules, a loggerhead sea turtle hatching. And whereas they have created a website to continue to spread word of their mission. And whereas these now fifth-grade students have remained committed to their project through all the challenges of the 2020 and 20, of 2020 and 2021. Whereas this team will be graduating Chestnut Elementary School at the end of the school year. Now therefore, I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of Dunwoody, do hereby proclaim May 10th, 2021, a Save That Ocean Team Day in honor of the commitment and dedication of the STO team at Chestnut Elementary School.
Thank you, Sharon.
So I'm Debbie Shudelman. I'm on the Sustainability Committee for the City of Dunwoody. And with me is Debbie Gordon, who served nine years at least on the committee and who brought these kids to our attention. So I wanted her to be able to talk just for a second about why we thought they were so worthy of being recognized today.
So I saw this group at the farmer's market one Saturday, and they were so enthusiastic and so excited about what they were doing. They told me all about their organization that they started and what they were doing at their school and raising money. And I was just so impressed with them and their teacher, and I just had to tell everybody that I could. And also, their baked goods are delicious. So I just want you guys to keep up the good work and be so proud of yourselves because this is so important and it's a hard thing to tackle. Congratulations.
So congratulations to all the kids and to their parents. This is an impressive group for what they've done. And I just want to say that I hope you all take the opportunity to look up their website. They still have ongoing activities. They're collecting cell phones, and they've got sites where you can drop those off. The Sustainability Committee does have high school and college members. So I hope when you get to high school, you will look us up and apply to be on the committee because they are equal and active members. And I just want to say that recognizing the teachers and the students, I think, is really important because you have shown that you are dedicated to making a difference. And it's these kinds of actions that you will leave a legacy. I know you're leaving a legacy at Chestnut because you were soliciting kids to follow you. In fact, I hear there are so many that want to be part of this group that they will have, that they can't all do it. So that's really, really commendable that you're setting this example. And I know we always say that actions always have consequences. And when we hear that, we think that the consequences aren't good, but that's not true. Consequences can often be wonderful. It's like throwing a pebble in a stream and seeing what it leads to. And what yours is leading to, it's really spreading out a wonderful, wonderful legacy. And I hope that you remember that and that you train others because it's actions like these that will let us all see a better world, and I appreciate it. And a couple of the students wanted to say something.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Hamlin, and I just want to say thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it, and we work so hard at our school to encourage everyone to recycle because there's only one earth, and believe it or not, we're standing on it right now. So I'm going to go ahead and hand the mic over to Alex to talk about how this club got started.
Okay, well, I'm not exactly going to talk about that, but so, um, we could not have done any of this that we've done in our whole club without our principal, Mr. Mack, our amazing STEM teacher, Ms. Onavato, and other teachers that have helped us through the club. And we couldn't have done it without the rest of the club, too. Yeah, we just started it just so we could make a difference, but it's turned out to be something way bigger than that. It's turned into something really important to us, too.
That is so awesome.
Danny, were you going to say something?
Well, I meant Ms. Brown, not Ms. Onavato.
I wonder. So I'm, somebody else going to speak? I'm so very proud of you, and I'm sorry I can't be there. I'm in Texas to pick up my college student who went to Chestnut many years ago. So we are a longtime Chestnut family. I'm very proud of the work you have done. And I think Mr. Hennigan has a presentation for y'all.
This is the proclamation.
Okay, I think.
Okay, Lynn, we are ready to move on.
The room is empty. Eric, it is time for the city manager's report, please.
Yes, mayor, and thank you. And as the council knows, but for the, for the public, we're changing the format of this report. It'll be now given once a month. That's the first meeting of the city council per month. And we'll do it under reports and presentations. The report's pretty similar to the last report. I'm going to hit the highlights of it. And the reason being is the report is now, we turn it in on the Wednesday before the council meeting. And so that was just a few days after our last council meeting. But what I want to go through is the Public Works Department, which are the projects we have going on there, which is the Pilar Road Sidewalk, Matilla Mill Sidewalk, our intersection at Spalding and Chambley-Dunwoody Road, the Old Village Run Sidewalk, and also our 2021 paving is underway as well. So there's a lot of activity going on in Public Works. You'll see construction throughout the city as well. On the, on the police portion of it, one thing I mentioned at the last meeting was the distracted driving detail is going on. We had issued 17 citations for hands-free violations. And this is just a safety concern where you want to follow state law on that and have people drive safely. Also, you'll notice within the report, the license plate reader cameras that are very successful in assisting our officers on solving crime. And, and a lot of items are solved really quickly because of those cameras. And we've worked with other jurisdictions who have the cameras as well. So it's a great network to, to solve problems. Parks Department, we have reopened the park rental. So the facilities are open now. And that would include, you know, Brook Run Park, Furnishaw Park, Winward Hollow Park Pavilion. And those are going on now. So if you need to have planning activity at our parks, you can go online and, and sign up there. Our community development continues to operate at full capacity, which is issuing 96 building inspections the past week and 21 new permits over the last time period as well. I did want to highlight for a moment the courts. And in, under the courts, we have a, our cases continue to move quickly through the courts. We disposed of 92 cases over the past two-week period. And one thing as well is our amnesty is, is coming to a close there to wrap up anybody who has failures to appear or anything else of that nature. The final highlight I want to mention is just goes back to communications, which is the vaccine awareness portion in that, in that section of this document and talking more about the events we've done to increase or encourage people to get vaccinated and take, protect themselves from the COVID virus. Anyway, I'm glad to answer any questions, mayor, you or the council may have. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Eric? I don't, oh, Joe, go ahead.
Eric, thank you again for the detailed information. I know we had some internal emails back and forth about the sidewalks over on Tilly Mill. And it's great that we're doing that, right? And we know that it's a short-term disruption for folks. And we know that it's going to be there for a long, long, long time. And people are going to love it when it's built, just, just like anything. Could you just kind of reiterate to the public about what we're doing to help people navigate around as construction is still occurring in that area?
Sure, sure. I'm glad, glad to do that. And yeah, we did have an incident the other day. When I say incident, there was a, so younger people were coming through on their bicycles, and they needed to get through the construction zone. And you know how a lot of construction zones are, they're very busy. And it depends on the time. We're trying to watch out for different type of safety issues there. And at that point, the, the young folks did walk their bicycles around the backside of the construction area. But I think what I'd like people to do is approach, you know, try to get the attention of the person to see that the flag person or the construction person. And so we can see that they're trying to get through the area. Any of the construction workers will do all they can to safely navigate any pedestrians or bicyclists or whatever through the area. But it is just an awareness. It's an awareness issue. There were no issues with it as far as safety. Everybody was safe during that time. And I would also ask the motorists to be very courteous as well when there are pedestrians and when there are bicyclists in the area, and also be respectful for the construction people. We do have very high standards for our construction or workers or employees that are there. And if there's ever, if somebody sees something that they're not doing quite right, please let me, let us know. You can always reach me on my email or call in the office here. We'll be glad to address that. We do address any issues that we have if, if the city does have a shortcoming on public service to the community. But having said that, councilman, I believe that, that if people can try to get the attention of the person that is the flag person or whoever's on that side of the road working construction, we can safely get them through.
Thank you, Eric. No further questions. Thank you.
Anybody else, questions, comments? Thank you, Eric. Next, we have Richard McLeod with the impact fee overview.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Hold on one second. Mr. McKay, you're next after this. I'm looking at the agenda. Okay, go ahead, Richard.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is a follow-up to our annual retreat. I have a short presentation on impact fees. Can you all see that?
I can.
All right, a little background. Impact fees are a way to pay for new development for their share, fair share of infrastructure. What I mean by fair share is only the demand that the new people put on the system. Impact fees can pay for capital investments only, no operating expenses. Can play, pay for off-site improvements, and it can be city-wide. For example, High Street may pay for a park across the city. There are seven eligible categories. I've highlighted the three that we are considering in red, black. Those are roads, parks, and open space, and public safety. Methodology. Impact fees go hand-in-hand with a comprehensive plan. It requires a creation of a capital improvement element for the 20-year time horizon. And establish the current level of service and future desired level of service. And impact fees cannot be used to increase the level of service for current residents. An annual update list, eligible projects for the next five years, part of that. The funds can only be spent on reference projects, and impact fees must be spent or encumbered within six years. So in 2011, the city had done an impact fee study. In that study, parks and rec, public safety, and roads were realized. In that, we had an annual, excuse me, impact fee of $337.77 that broke down to $584.29 for parks and rec, $33.48 for public safety, $1.42 for roads, which sounds odd. But assuming that roads can be covered through other property taxes, and also the city is fairly built out, so it's only impact of new residents. And 1858 for administration. So for example, an office at $85 per thousand square foot, it would be about $17,000 for a 200-square-foot office. And for retail at $46 per square, or 1,000 square feet, it's about 4,600 or 100,000 square feet retail center. So a single-family, what we've done, we've compared Sandy Springs, City of Atlanta, and Roswell, the Parks and Rec, the public safety, roads, administration, and you have a total on the right side. Sandy Springs is, leads the pack in amount of impact fees. And the fees for single-family townhouses and multifamily units are virtually the same. This is an office per thousand square feet. 48, 80, 2,200, and 1,500. And for 1,000 feet of retail, you can see the cost difference. So this chart will show you where the national average is. We have the high portions. Portland, Oregon, it is certainly high, $17,000 per single-family unit. And the Atlanta average is down here at 1,400. And we are below that about $600. So let's look at a recent select scenario of 84 Premier Center East. There are about 40,000 square feet of retail, 225 dwelling units. The low scenario here is what Dunwoody would have charged based on the 2011 study. And the high scenario, for example, is what Sandy Springs charges currently. So the Parks and Rec, public safety, roads, and administration. We're looking at about $144,000. It's $1.8 million in the city of Sandy Springs. Considerations and next steps. Currently, the city negotiates improvements on a case-by-case basis. Impact fees may reduce the willingness of developers to do that. For example, in the conditions of zoning, there was a main park, multi-use path, no more than $100,000 towards the design and construction of additional transportation. Improvements. Existing private shuttle, public art. All of these would probably most likely go away. So considerations and next steps. Again, impact fees are proportional to the scale of new development. Decide whether to incorporate policy objectives, for example, affordable housing, traffic reduction, or parks. Decide whether to have impact fees for park recreation only or also for roads and public safety. We also would need a consultant to come in and do study. It would probably cost around $50,000. It would take approximately six months. And it would require half to three-quarters of a full-time person split amongst community development, finance, parks and recreation, public works. So that was it. I leave it up to you all. Thank you.
Okay, so this is just a discussion today and a reminder to the public because I know it was clear, but just want to make it clear that this would be on new construction only. This isn't about, this isn't, it isn't on existing residents or existing homes.
That's correct.
All right. So any questions? John?
Thank you, Richard. As far as the impact fee assessment report, looks like it was last done in 2011. I'm guessing that's expired. Or what's the real change that we're expecting between that report and whatever report you would want to go forward for, for $50,000?
Well, depending on how much you wanted to do. If you wanted to do just parks and rec, roads, or public safety, you know, that was almost 10 years ago. Certainly, the land costs have increased. So those park numbers would need to be leveled out.
Okay, I'm just trying to, I'm scrolling through that report to try to see what the major changes were. Yes, it's been a few years. It's been 10 years. I'm just, as far as the, the numbers and the, the heavy lift, I don't think is going to be as large as the first time. That's all.
Okay.
No other questions?
Thank you. Any other questions? Stacy?
Richard, could you explain to me a little bit more in the methodology? I understand that impact fees go hand-in-hand with our comp plan.
Correct.
So can you explain to me the, that requires a creation of a capital improvement element with a 20-year time horizon?
Yeah.
What is, what does that mean?
So it's a state-mandated feature with impact fees. It's a CIE is what it's called. And it, it judges where we currently are. For example, Parks and Rec, we have so many acres per 1,000 people or 100 people. And we project out where we want to get to. It may be X plus a number of acres for the same number of people. And so all the new growth would then pay a fee. And hopefully, that fee would get us there. But it's, it's important because you rely on the, the growth of population to pay the impact fees. Because again, as the mayor said, only new growth will pay for that.
And then one more question of clarification. Impact fees cannot be used to increase level of service for current residents. What is, what, what is the definition of levels of service? I didn't quite understand that.
So for like a transportation, we have level A through F, I believe. A is fairly good traffic. F is terrible. And each GDOT has a system of averaging those uses and, and rating the road. And for example, our big arterials are typically C or D. We could not raise it up to a B just on current growth. So it's, it's complicated because you take the percent, the, the number of people who move to the city, and you have to back out the existing growth. And you come up with a, a figure of percentage of growth that goes towards the new residents.
I think as we move forward, I'll have more questions. I know this is just the initial discussion.
Anybody else? Tom?
Thank you. Hey, Richard, thank you for the presentation. Are these impact fees, does the law state when they're paid, are they paid upfront? Are they paid at the completion of the project? How does that work?
They're paid upfront.
And those fees go to this, go to this fund of the city regard? What happens if the project stalls or, or the, you know, the, so, you know, it's sold? Or what, what happens to those funds? Are we required to refund them or? so you know, it's sold, or what, what happens to those funds? Are we required to refund them or are they in the system at that point?
So typically, they're paid at the time you built whole building permits. So you know, not much can go wrong from that period. Because it's only a few months until the house is built or the structure is built. They may approach council and ask for to pay them at the end of the time just to guarantee us and the builder developer that those fees will still be there and for, to cover all the houses.
Okay, and then those fees, they go into a, a general fund, kind of like the stormwater fees where it's one fund, and then those projects are funded out of that? Because I, and the reason for asking this is it's stipulated that those funds must be spent within a six-year window, so are the actual fees tracked on, on, on a particular project?
Yeah.
To make sure?
Yeah, they are tracked, and they are kept in that separate account. And
And the CIP fund that, that's for the impact fees, that, would that be, that would be separate from our, our city newly instituted capital improvement plan, it would be, this would be a separate specifically for utility fee projects, correct? Okay, and then I know, I know you mentioned a little bit about, you know, the negotiated improvements that we do, and, and that's something that we do a lot where, you know, a developer and you know, we'll put in a road or a multi-use path or a park or some other amenity into a project. And understandably, I would imagine that we might see less of that. And, or as you alluded, maybe not at all. They might be not willing to do that. From a legal standpoint, if we, if we institute impact fees, can we negotiate a reduced impact fee in exchange for a, a project on a particular site? And I guess my main reason for asking that is sometimes it is easier or more desirable to get that amenity built while the project's being built as opposed to down the road, so is that something we're allowed to do, or are we bound by this is the, the formula for the impact fee? And you must pay that regardless?
I don't know. Bill, do you have an idea on that question? I'll have to research it.
Okay, thanks. I, I, I didn't see if that was, okay. And then, I guess, I guess another question is, is there any legal distinction between an impact fee and an improvement? And my reason for asking this question is we've seen this a lot recently with projects here in the city where a developer will include improvements as part of their project to get, you know, to get approval from the city. And then after, after approval comes, those improvements are then kind of negotiated as part of a tax abatement. And it's, you know, in my view, it's kind of like this financial shell game where, hey, we're going to build these things for you, but then, hey, we want an abatement in exchange. Is there any, with impact fees, is there any, does that reduce that? Does that eliminate that, or is is there any distinction there?
I don't think so because there are two boards, you all make the zoning decision, the development authority does the tax abatement.
So they could always just throw that in there as part of their presentation or their justification for an abatement, but there, I was just curious if there was any legal distinction, you know, especially since this would be, you know, if, if we instituted impact fees, this would be something that would be consistent across the board, so. Okay, I, I believe that's all the questions I have for now. I think you answered my other questions earlier. Thank you.
Tom, Jim?
Yes, thank you, Richard. Appreciate the, the report. So in the report, i-if we look at who's doing this in the metro area, we've identified Atlanta, Roswell, Forsyth County, Alpharetta, Sandy Springs, Milton. Are, are there any others? Does that, does that imply that, for instance, Brookhaven is not doing impact fees at this time?
Yeah, they are. In fact, Woodstock was doing them.
So it's just a matter of you got to stop somewhere, and this is just what you presented, but they're probably all in a similar range of what we're seeing in, in your graph here on page, whatever it is that's got the whole. Okay. All right, that, well, that answers the question. So would you say a majority of municipalities and or counties are doing them in the metro area, or what?
No, I would think that a lesser majority are doing them.
So significant number, but not a majority. Okay.
Yeah, because what we did in Woodstock is we came up with our, for example, our Parks and Rec fee, and it was like eight thousand dollars per house. And council did not want to do that, so they voted to do them, but it was a much reduced rate. So they only charged a hundred dollars, I'm saying, instead of eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because this is developers and whatnot do not like impact fees.
No, yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, just a couple of, you know, I don't have any more questions for Richard, but you know, if I may make a couple of comments, I mean, you know, as far as residential construction, we're, we're about built out beyond, you know, multifamily and, you know, some things that are already zoned that, that we haven't had, you know, much influence over. I think we all know what I'm talking about there. You know, we, we, we've talked about the issue of affordable housing. Well, I'm here to tell you that impact fees are, you know, they, they go straight to the bottom line of that affordable housing and make it less affordable, so there, there, that's just a comment. You know, on especially on commercial, you know, to me, the need is more for, you know, the public works just to make it so you can get around and get in and out of the commercial, i.e. you know, improvements to the road net that are, you know, we're kind of behind the curve on.
Yeah, it was interesting, though, that we only charged a dollar, I think, forty-two for roads. I think because our road system is virtually built for about ninety percent of the city or ninety-five percent of the city. So coming up with how we could increase the volume, but do it all. I'm sorry?
And use those funds.
Correct.
Appropriately use those funds within the constraints of the enabling state legislation, I guess. You know, that said, there's, you know, there's a whole lot of room to build a lot of multipurpose trails. All right, thank you very much. That's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Any else? Joe?
Yeah, thanks for the report there, Richard. You mentioned FTE potentially of, of a half or three-quarters. Would you see that this would be a as-needed basis? I, I'm, I'm finding hard-pressed to say we need somebody for twenty or more hours a week all year long to manage this program versus just on an as-needed basis when a project were arise and funds were to be, you know, available.
We just use the figure about a, a half to three-quarters of a person based on, you know, if we use all three of them, public safety, roads and parks, we get a little bit more complicated and it would take a little more time.
And when, when we do get more information, kind of dovetailing what Jim mentioned, nice to know, say, in the metro, greater metro areas, who are those listing of municipalities that do have those fees? And I, I am also kind of concerned about Stacy mentioning about the, the plan where you have to have this separate plan. So like, I, I always like to see case studies. So show us like, what is Sandy Springs doing? They've, they've got to follow the same guidelines with having a, you know, this plan type of in place. And so when they have, because they've had a lot of infill, a lot of developments going on, as we all know. So I'd be, be very curious to just pick, pick one of those developments and just show us to us in a packet as well. Here's what was presented. Here's what they did. Here's what the funds were used for. That'd be just kind of nice to know.
Yeah, I'll show you Sandy Springs.
Yeah, thanks. And just related but unrelated, interesting, you know, you had Mercedes-Benz move in next door, and the city refunded them a million dollars. The city gave them and wrote them a check for a million dollars dispersment. It's, it's like a reverse impact fee. Mercedes said they had invested about, I, it's, it's, it's a news article that came out in June of last, two thousand and nineteen. So they, they reimbursed them a million dollars. Council made a decision for that. And they had, Mercedes came back and said they had put in over one-point-five million in public investments of infrastructure around that area. So that case would be really interesting to find out how that whole thing transpired. Did Mercedes-Benz give a net to Sandy Springs of such much? Just really, really interesting. Again, it's the whole spectrum. And I'll just also kind of layer on of the, all of the above, whether we call it an impact fee or we ask the developer to do something. Potentially, we have a matrix of these are your options. So i.e., okay, you are adjacent to an area where we want to have some infrastructure redesign. Would you do that? That would be part A, or, or you have an option of putting into a fund that could be used out, you know, maybe not adjacent to their, their location. So like a matrix of different contribution options from infrastructure parks, whether it's open space or fees or for police or roads or so on. It'd be, you know, just, just something thinking a little bit out of the box there versus just one-size-fits-all.
Joe, Michael Smith has his hands up. Ginger, can you allow him to speak, please?
Yeah, I was just going to respond to Councilman Ryan Titres' question about the roads and, and the impact fees can only, new development has to pay for services needed by the new development. So if you have an existing roadway that you've identified as a failing level, level of service currently, and you want to bring it up to a acceptable level of service, well, because it's already failing, you can't put the burden on the, of that on the new development. So the, the money you collect really can only be used for projects to, to, to provide more service to the new development, if that makes sense.
Mi-Michael, while, while you're on there, are we also, is it strictly for roads and paving, or can that money be go towards intersection improvements? You know, that might be related to increased volumes of traffic and, and stuff like that?
It can be used for any transportation-related project. And, and then also, I was going to, on Councilman Seconders' question about the administrative part, there, besides just doing the projects, there is, you know, you have to collect the money when it comes in every time there's a new permit, and there's some accounting that goes with that. And then every year, you have to submit an annual report to the state for their approval that you're administering the, the program the way you're supposed to. So, so there is some administrative costs, but that administrative cost can also be built into the, to the impact fee.
I would add, though, that, Michael, we cannot do maintenance on those roadways.
That's right.
Right, okay, Stacy?
So with the consideration of next steps, and one is to obtain a consultant to conduct an impact fee study, what will that impact fee study look like? What, what all will it tell us? We'll answer some of the questions of, you know, in looking at our city, we'd be like, should lean more towards parks or intersection improvements, like what, what is, what are we going to get for fifty thousand dollars?
Essentially, you'll get the, the capital improvement update. It involves a lot of interviews with all of you all and the staff to determine what those end results are. But it'll all be laid out in that capital improvement update. And that has to go back to city council for approval.
Will it include the comparison studies of adjoining municipalities to, so that we know that will help us make a decision as to where our level should be and how we would compare with other municipalities?
I don't, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt. I'm not sure we're ready to commission the study. We aren't, this isn't an action item anyway, so I think this was just an overview, and we can bring it up and put it on the future agenda to continue talking about. But but so I, I, I think I'd like to see the information about other cities first. I'd like, you know, it's one thing to say we're in, that it's not a majority of the cities, but how about we look at it as a majority of the cities where there's limited opportunities for development and redevelopment? Let's not compare ourselves to cities in Metro Atlanta that have ample land and have lots happening, or who are actively trying to attract a lot of development. Let's find the cities we consider our peer cities, perhaps our competitors, and take a close deep dive at what they're doing, and then go from there. I think that would be a really helpful next step from a competitive standpoint, looking at seeing what, what those kinds of cities are doing. Eric, is that okay? Lynton? You're muted.
Unmute, I'm trying to unmute, I'm sorry. Yes, that's fine. Absolutely. We can do it that way.
That before we authorize the study, I think we need more discussion. Plus, this isn't even an action item tonight. It was just an overview. Stacy, did that answer your question?
Yes, and I like that because that's kind of where I was trying to get.
Right. When the city, oh, go ahead, Richard.
The CIA will not compare us to other cities because each city is unique into itself, what its needs are.
When the city was formed, we were in the middle of a deep recession, particularly with real estate. And as, and so the previous perspective and everything else, I mean, we need probably a clean start to assess if we're going to do it, what are we going to do? But, but it would be interesting to see what our peer cities are doing. Okay. Thank you, Richard. Now, Mr. McKay, it's time for the audit report. Mr. McKay, you are unmuted, but we cannot, you, yes, thank you.
All right, here we go. Thank you. So for the audit report, first of all, good evening. Going to, the material I'm going over is in your packets. Also, we've reviewed it at the audit committee meeting earlier today. And the audit committee is in agreement with what I'm about to tell you. So the the work this quarter, continuous monitoring, did a report. And then I'm going to update you on a prior recommendation, followed by the internal audit plan by quarter for two thousand and twenty-one. As to the continuous monitoring, I've reviewed the financial reports every quarter. And included in that review is the report that goes to the mayor and city council. I reviewed it for reasonableness and found it reasonable. I also read Linda Neighbors' letter about the variations. I found those reasonable. And in addition, noted that management is taking responsibility for internal controls. And there's an acknowledgement of that on the report. All that is proper, consistent with prior year, prior periods, and the report was in good shape. As far as what I stated in their written report is that I found no expenditures or other financial matters that I found, I didn't find anything not to be in compliance with the charter, the budget and ordinances. So that's a clean report on the financial reports at March thirty-first. The report I worked on this quarter, which was in the, which was in the plan previously approved, was a fraud risk assessment. And to develop twenty-nine points related to what a fraud risk assessment would related to what a fraud risk assessment would be, I went to professional literature. I went to professional journals and also did some cooperative information with other other counties and cities as to what they're doing in those areas. And um the scope was on um fraud awareness, internal control, and management and supervision. I attached to my report the 29 steps I went through related to those things. And in each one of them, there was a positive response and the um the city is doing what they should. Uh, Linda Neighbors did put in there that uh she thought she would like to get her staff more free training out of the um the state related to fraud awareness. Uh, everybody was in agreement um with that. And um also, it had in there that the um city has implemented that uh hotline that we had talked about. And um there there have not been any calls to it yet, but it is in place and the information about it has been distributed. Those are all good uh fraud avoidance steps. The next thing I looked at was to get an update on a recommendation from the prior period. Uh, you may recall that um I had noted a check, $18,000 check had been uh voided and had to be reissued because it was quote "lost in the mail." Everything was appropriate about that, other than it was lost in the mail. And uh that the recommendation I had was to uh go ahead and implement, look into implementing issuing many more checks electronically. Linda and her staff have gone about a very methodical process to make sure that we're not losing controls, overriding any controls by issuing checks electronically. She thoroughly reviewed it with the uh truist and is in a testing phase now and is planning to be implemented in the next quarter. I think everything that can be done has been done related to this, including being careful about not opening up our bank account while we try to make improvements uh in efficiency by issuing checks electronically. So that's right on track. The audits for the remainder of the year, the second quarter, is a review of the uh CAFR or the financial statements. And uh the audit committee did in fact see a um first draft of that, which for May the 10th was in very good shape uh with a June 30th filing date at the appropriate time. That report will come before the mayor and city council. Third quarter, looking at the Dunwoody Not-for-Profits. Fourth quarter, purchasing cards and fuel credit cards. Also reported on the other considerations related to cybersecurity. And um previously, the mayor and city council at this similar meeting last quarter decided to do that with the city manager. The uh auditors from Malden and Jenkins, the external auditors, heard our discussion about that. And they also agree that uh um he he just in these days just can't do enough related to uh cybersecurity and they had some suggestions of what additional things to be being done to. But they thought the city was handling everything appropriately. That would conclude my report, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Okay, um, questions? Anybody? Joe.
This one might be more for Eric. Did the did the state pass that law that allows the executive sessions for IT?
They did. I don't know that the governor signed it yet. Sorry, I'm not Eric, but I know the answer.
Maybe not.
No, it did pass. Can you hear me? It did pass, but I don't know that the governor signed it yet, but I'll find out. I have a meeting tomorrow with.
So in that light, if it were to pass, uh potentially, I could have proposed with Bill and Eric and and folks that we would have one that would really go in depth on our IT infrastructure systems and and so on.
Right. We have to read it and see what it allows.
Right. Um, that would be good. Bill, do you do you know what we're doing percentage-wise for the electronic transfers versus manual checks? Or are they all manual now?
Pretty close to all manual.
And do do we have a a goal where obviously there's gonna be exceptions and different vendors just don't have an exception?
It's so um I I haven't talked with uh Linda about actual goals, but I I would say I I would suggest that the the normal way Dunwoody would disperse money would be electronically. And the exceptions would be when a manual check is needed for some particular uh purpose. But uh the goal would be to go as far electronic as we can.
Right. I'd like to to just kind of get an idea of what that percentage target would look like, uh maybe, you know, over the next year. Um, and then talk about in the segregation of duties and so on, in the actual application, the software themselves. So we do have different people doing different things, segregation duties, but in the software, there's logins and different people have different accesses. Do you have you? Do you look at our IT systems and see who has uh the segregation duties by their user accounts and permissions and what they can see and what they can can do? Do you do you look into that?
Probably not in the in uh the way you asked that question. What I do is uh I look into the particularly as it relates to dispersments. There's three approvals needed before the dispersment. And uh they're all individuals, separate um people with separate responsibilities. And if it's over a certain dollar amount, it uh it goes to a fourth level and that's the uh city manager.
Okay, so when we get to the electronic funds transfer portion of it, that means that that implies somebody's keying it in in an application. So I'd be interested to know if we're gonna keep those layers of approvals inside the application itself. And then also that we can audit that, if we can go back in and make sure that we can look at, you know, who did what and when, date, time, um, you know, made those dispersments.
I I would see um I would see no uh separate keying in of information. I would see electronically transferred from station, the person to person or station to station. Uh, I see Linda's come on. Uh, Linda, did you want to add something in this conversation?
Uh, yes, it would be in an electronic format that it would come from our financial system. And um there are certain types of files that are allowed and it's only one type of file. What would happen is the um template or the uh, well, it is a template, would be uploaded. But it also requires a a different level than the regular uh entry level or the one entering it or uploading it, which would also have control totals. And so you those would definitely have to match before they would uh could be totally dispersed. So one would be um at the level that usually cut would cut a check. And the next one would be an approval level, uh approving the control totals. And where we are right this minute is um trying to make sure that the information uh is encrypted and it's encrypted at um at rest and then in transit. So that's where we're working with IT to make sure uh that that part is very secure. And uh hopefully, we'll have some resolution on that uh pretty soon. But it will require the same steps, uh internal controls on that as well as one additional, which would be a total dollar control that has to be done on the bank side.
Great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McKay. Uh, I noticed that you had an audit committee meeting today and there was a topic of discussion on Dunwoody Senior Baseball, I guess actually by you, Linda. Can I get an update and what was that discussion on? Is there anything pertinent for city council?
So we did require um to receive financial information from them um after each quarter. And they did provide some information and um it wasn't totally complete when they first submitted it. And when we asked um for a second set that was clean, where we could see actually the recipient on the check, you know, the check copies, they quickly provided that. So we have uh quite a few follow-up questions that we have in regards to them and um, you know, what was provided on the financial side of it. So Bill has been uh involved in that as well. So uh we will have questions to them and they will be able to uh respond, you know, so we can see exactly what's going on.
Okay, so it's an ongoing matter. That's I saw it on the agenda. I figured I would ask for a public.
It i- it is. It was um just just like I said, that they had provided the information. We still had some further questions, but um we can provide an update after we get through with that.
Thank you very much. A nice uh report, Mr. McKay. I appreciate all you do.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I don't think I see anybody else. Thank you very much. Um, we appreciate it. And thank you to the audit committee.
Very good. Thank you.
Next, I believe we have the consent agenda. My thing just went down. That's correct, Mayor. It is. Okay, thank you. The consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or comments on these items on the consent agenda?
Move to per move to approve as presented.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Jim. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question. Please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Now it's your turn, Sharon.
The next item under business is item number 10. The uh it's a second read of a text amendment and ordinance amending chapter 27 of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances by amending section 27 dash 87 to adjust requirements for the PD Plan Development District.
Thank you, Sharon. Uh, good evening. Evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Let me share my screen. Um, again, this was before you twice, uh so I'll uh I won't do a full presentation again. Uh, I want to start with pointing out the two remaining issues that I would ask you to consider today that we didn't have like a a consensus at the the last meeting. One is the minimum contiguous land area for those residential districts. So in this case, that's the suburban neighborhood character area and the institutional campus character area. Uh, I heard at the last meeting, uh interest of the council in changing those 200 square feet that are in there currently. Um, that's about 4.59 acres and I've heard four acres or five acres also. Four acres would be a slight decrease in the minimum area, five acres a slight increase. Um, so I would ask you, when you make the motion, uh to please include that to the number you all decide to do. Then the second item um that is already part of the package, so it's part of the uh ordinance that's before you. That's the Planning Commission review. And uh just brief reminder that the Planning Commission, as part of Bay Review, had requested uh getting the the ability to defer up to three times, so to here each case up to four times total. Uh, currently, they have the option to defer up to one time. And uh the language that's provided to you would allow them to do that for rezoning applications to the PD district only. Uh, we had a couple other sort of uh question at the last meeting. And I've prepared presentations for like these specific uh topics that that are here, but I don't want to uh suck up kind of more oxygen than I need to. And uh if if there is an interest, Mayor, kind of or uh if you could check in with the council, like I I have prepared a couple slides. Uh, number one, for the zoning process, how it looks in the PD district and how the council can engage with that. Uh, number two, uh overview of the rezoning approval criteria. And number three, uh a regional comparison and what some other municipalities are doing with their PD districts. And I'm happy to go through all of them or or to skip them.
Okay. All right, are you? Would you like me to start the questions?
Yeah.
Oh, was that the end of your presentation as it is right now?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. All right, let me do the low-hanging fruit first. Could do you mind maybe temporarily closing your presentation so I can see people? Thank you. Um, so uh low-hanging fruit, the three times for the Planning Commission to defer, does anybody object to that? All right, so that's I see nobody objecting, so that stays, Paul. Does that help? Is that what you need it?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, now the size of the residential because we want to put it in acres. So 4.59 acres is probably a little awkward. Um, is that right? We want to put, do we want to put it in acres or square footage, Richard or Paul? Now I've confused myself.
I think the interest of of the council at the last hearing was to put it into acres.
Okay, all right. So with that, uh, does anybody, we we don't want to, I know we don't want to do 4.5. I don't think we should do 4.59. Maybe you all do, and that's what it is currently, right, Paul?
Right.
4.59. So we have voices, as I see them, for 4.5 or five would be the way I would look at it. So someone, go ahead and take a stab at it.
I'll say five.
And I was gonna say four.
I was just saying, you know, and like if you were doing grade point averages, that would be a five.
I was actually, when I came up with four, I was kind of had the Roberts reason that we did and that was like and and then kind of like eight half-acre lots would be four acres. So that's where I was.
I think I'm more comfortable with five, actually. I mean, it's um it's to me, this
I want to encourage them.
This is not meant for single-family residential. We've moved it quite a bit. So I don't know. That's just, that's my personality. I'm more comfortable with five.
Jim? I don't want to put anybody on the spot. If anybody cares passionately, we have to decide, so. Oh, Tom, are you talking?
Yes, we could put 4.5.
4.5 and just split it down the middle.
4.5.
To the 4.59, so 4.5.
4.5 works. Okay, so I think 4.5, there's some consensus around that. All right, now we can discuss the rest of it. Questions, comments for whoever wants to go first? John?
Well, Paul, when your last slide, you were talking about three presentations. I I had questions regarding the approval process and some of those aspects. Do you have presentations ready to give on those three topics?
Uh, I do, yes.
I'd like to hear those presentations, if not just for myself, but for the public entities that are listening. I'd love to get the PowerPoint presentations on into this meeting as well. I think it's important that we are, you know, know exactly what we're doing here in the future as far as how we're moving forward. I'd like to hear what you have to say, sir.
All right, then I'm I'm happy to share my screen again and then go through.
Start with.
These slides.
Okay.
Which one would you like me to stop at?
Approval process.
Okay. So my PowerPoint is spinning right now. Give me just a second. And now it collapsed. So let me go ahead with this again.
If you have them in a different order, please do them in the order that you have them. Please, do not, just do them in the order you have them. I thought maybe there were three separate presentations. Go ahead and do them in the order you have them, please.
All right, yep, thank you, Mayor. So I have an overview slide here over the typical zoning process. So it starts before even an application is filed. So we typically, on the staff, we see these applications typically a half year before anything is filed. And we have sort of initial conceptual meetings with the applicants, which is presented to us to get the process going. So it generally starts with a formal pre-application meeting, where we give advice on the application, on the process, and so forth. Then before the, before the application is received, there's a community meeting, that's applicant initiated, we have a certain, we haven't submitted a formal application yet. Mailers get sent, there's a legal, and then there's the community meeting itself. This is the first time generally, the public at large gets access to a new zoning, a new zoning application. Only after that meeting, there's an application actually filed, and then it gets formalized into the system, and the deadline really starts. There are two public hearings for any zoning process in the City of Dunwoody that are all, people receive mailers, there's a legal ad, there'll be signage out in the property. And then there's a public hearing, one in front of the Planning Commission, and one in front of the City Council, and then there's at a minimum a second read at the City Council also. And then should a case need variances or like relief from the zoning in most, in most zoning districts, then there is an additional public process that includes a public hearing in front of the zoning board of appeals. So this is more or less the order in which the zoning process proceeds in most traditional zoning districts. For the PD District, you can pretty much like, the way it looks from the outside, you just cut off that last piece. So the, all the other parts stay the same. So there's the community meeting, there is the pre-application process, the Planning Commission hearing, the City Council hearing. But then instead of a case that needs relief from certain zoning section proceeding to the zoning board of appeals, it ends with the City Council, and the City Council makes the final decision on these processes. From a timeline perspective, it saves approximately three months, because that's the amount of time that the zoning board of appeal meeting needs to be advertised, and then heard for. You know the hearing process really well, because that's the part where you get engaged. So I briefly want to go over what happens in those phases before, and what the opportunity is for you all, not in your role as the City Council, but in your role as individual council members to potentially get involved in. Again, I've mentioned these early stages before an application gets submitted, before anything gets public, and sometimes developers can be very private about this at this time. Sometimes they're not. But we get presented initial plans, we provide feedback on land use, layout, the design, the architecture of the green space, traffic, and then overall how it aligns with city policy and the comprehensive plan. In some instances, a project really goes away at this phase already. A lot of projects actually do, because they propose something that's inappropriate for the city. And we explain the policies and so forth, and then a developer may decide not to move forward with the project already. And there is, if there's interest from the council, and if there's also interest from the developer, there is the potential where we can share some of those documents, because sometimes developers can be, you know, they have something, they know it could be a bit of a, you know, controversial project, or it's a project where they would like sort of additional input on the design. And we would be happy for you all, if you have an interest in it, and you let us know. To share some of those documents. The next phase again, before an application gets filed, so it's not an official application, it's not something that will consider on yet. This is the applicant initiated community meeting, this is sort of out in public. It's formally advertised, and this allows the neighbors, allows the community to provide input on the preliminary plans, and allows a developer to take that into consideration. They may see that there's significant opposition to what they're proposing, and they may scrap the project at that point, too. This is another good opportunity, so therefore, because the plans are not filed at this point, the design is generally still in flux, it hasn't undergone engineering to provide input by council member two, and provide an initial reaction and potentially flag an issue or two that they can address. And the really important part is that, you know, not to make any promises in those phases. Say it is appropriate to be active in those phases, but what we can't do is make any promises. And what we also can do is to speak for the council at large. So at this point, you would be in your role as an individual councilman and as a resident of the City of Dunwoody. So in this case, it's like summarizes where there is that potential opportunity for you all to be involved. Any questions about this part? Let me move.
If you have questions, just speak up, because I can't see all of you. No questions? Okay.
Move to the next one, now it'd be a bit quick about this one. I have a list here of all the approval criteria, and it's the same approval criteria that applies to a PD case, then apply to any other something that's before you. So hypothetically, let's assume 84 permits in the east would have chosen, would have chosen to go for PD district rezoning, then you would have applied, and we as staff would have applied, and you as council would have applied the same approval criteria. And these are generally based on state law. So a lot of this comes right from the, right from state ordinances regarding zoning. And I'll just go over one or two of those, and I'll go over one or two of those, and this is what you see in the staff reports. But we sort of, as staff, we respond specifically to those requirements to help you sort of wrap your heads around those and give you a vocabulary, vocabulary that you can use if you so desire for your discussion, or like when you make your motions. For instance, like the first one has, the first approval criteria is whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the comprehensive plan. And then what we do is that, we look at the comprehensive plan, we look at sections in there that apply specifically to what's proposed. And we look at other adopted sort of policies and plans of the city. For instance, here, we looked at the perimeter LCI plan, that was adopted. And so we go through some of these, go through all of these and respond to this. The second one here, whether it's a use that's suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent or nearby properties, where we look, you know, what the improvements are on the adjacent properties, and then if, you know, if there are conflicts proposed and so forth.
Richard, I think you missed a slide back a couple. You went really fast through it. Two more, one more.
Yeah, this one, this one got moved, kind of when the PowerPoint crashed, and then it loaded again. This was supposed to be, when I talked to you about where you can get involved as part of the zoning process, these were these items that I wanted you to consider. Oh, no, okay, this is, that is about the seventh criteria. So this is, the seven criteria have to be considered, that's state law. But you may request additional information, but they're not exclusive. You may request additional information, and you may consider additional information as long as you generally follow the approval criteria. You may also consider public input, that's why we have it. It's a public hearing, and you may consider the public input also. And then if you, if you don't want to, there is also no requirement for you to speak into the record. So for instance, if you want to deny a case, you can, you don't have to come up with, you know, a very involved reason for it. This is sort of partially why we as the staff provide the staff report for you.
Okay, so that's different from other rezonings, where I have to state exactly why I'm voting against something. Is that correct?
It's not, not everybody has to, not everybody has to give the individual reasoning. We just need to be able, as a city, to tie it, like to, we need to have documents in the record, and, but not every council member needs to speak.
Okay, I just remember in the past, when we voted against certain rezonings, I was basically told by our attorneys that we need to state which of the seven reasons that we were voting against something.
Bill, answer this question, please. Eric? Or can you answer it, Eric, with your community development background? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Sure. The thing is, you just have to have a rational criteria. And if the staff is making a recommendation against it, they're going to put the criteria out there to begin with. When you voted, when you voted down, we do need to have a rational reason behind that. I think you don't generally need to go and be very particularly expressive about it, but a rational reason that you voted against it, like the council member stated previously. What's the criteria that you found, and why you opposed it to be sufficient? But generally speaking, if the staff's opposed to it, they've already put your criteria out there, and you can adopt that staff report, and it answers those questions.
All right, thank you, Bill. I was just thinking of the staff recommended approval, and I wanted to vote no because of, let's say, consider public input, but considering public input's not one of the seven criteria. Am I allowed to state that?
You could say that you did public input, but you know, there, the public input should have something and it probably will meet part of the, one of those seven criteria, and you're taking that into account.
Okay, thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand the criteria in which we are supposed to be working.
Yes, sir.
Paul, you can keep going.
Yep, then other items, for the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use, is currently zoned. The zoning proposal would adversely affect the existing use, usability of adjacent or nearby property. Whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property that provides supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the zoning proposal affect historic building sites, districts, or archaeological resources. And then finally, result in the use that will or could cause an excessive of use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. And all of these criteria are, in a way, where reasonable people can have different opinions about them. So these are not kind of as clear-cut as, for instance, you know, other criteria, maybe. These are all, you know, they reflect sort of policy choices, and they're not stated in a way that there's a clear yes or no answer on any of these. I mean, they're not the mathematics kind of solution. They really are in a way where, you know, reasonable people can have different opinions. Any questions about the zoning approval criteria at this point?
Just ask your questions, because I can't see you. All right, I don't hear any, so you can keep going, Paul, unless somebody's interrupting.
No, I think you've answered all of our questions here. At least you answered mine. Thank you.
And then sort of, we looked at a couple other places that have similar requirements in Georgia, and I'll go through the ones that we have found. And they're all relatively similar to what we're proposing, honestly. Brookhaven, for instance, they have a one-tier system, so it wouldn't be like ours that's split between the residential districts and the commercial. Two-acre minimum, and they have some additional zoning criteria. So they apply their regular zoning criteria, and then they apply different ones. And they just all go into the direction that the developer needs to make a case why he needs to choose that district. And it's pretty much that it can't be accommodated in the regular zoning districts. So that's a difference that Brookhaven has. Shambly has a one-tier system also. They have a requirement in there that it needs to be a mixed-use kind of a district, so it needs to combine at least two kind of different land use groups. They have a one-acre minimum, so it's a bit smaller than what we're proposing at this point. And Shambly is applying the regular zoning criteria. Gainesville has a two-tier system, the residential has a minimum of 1.5 acres. The commercial has no minimum acreage, so anybody can go for, what would they call it, PUD or like a PD district. And they have unique zoning criteria, so they apply entirely different zoning criteria than they do for their traditional zoning districts. And if you look at those, they are more, they suit themselves a bit more towards something like a development review or like a design review. For instance, like the extent to which the proposed architectural features of buildings within the development are harmonious. So it addresses, you know, that these are supposed to be, yeah, sort of planned developments that are sort of aesthetically belonging together. So Gainesville, the difference is that they have those separate zoning criteria. And then we looked at Augusta, too, and they have, again, there's like a requirement for them to mix uses for these PD districts. And they have no minimum acreage for the district, and they follow the regular zoning criteria. All right, any questions about those, those comparative examples?
It appears that a number of these municipalities have a mix of different uses, where ours is really can be just one single use. From all the, maybe I missed it, was there any presidential or any municipality that only uses one type of zoning and yet calls it a planned development? Are we going to be the only one doing that?
No, there is, Gainesville allows, Gainesville allows it to be applied to a single use also. And then some of this, like Shambly, for instance, it's not per se like a mix of uses, but it can be like, if it's a single-family detached and attached, that's two separate use groups, or if it's townhomes, but they're also put in duplexes, then that already comes to, so it's not a full-on, not a full-on sort of traditional kind of mixed use. And then Brookhaven also. And then Brookhaven also, that does not mandate multiple uses.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have, Paul, if you don't mind closing your presentation. Nice job, by the way. Very informative. Does anybody have questions or comments? I don't see any. Stacy, did you have a question? No, okay. Somebody, okay. I think this is a business item. It's an action item. So we need to take a vote. Can I get a motion, please, if anyone's interested?
Move to approve.
Moved by Pam.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion or comments?
Madam Mayor, do we need to do amendments as per the discussions that we had previously?
Good job. Yes. So not for the three times because we, that was already there, right, Paul? But the acreage. Nice catch. All right. So we have a motion on the floor. Now I think we need an amendment about the four and a half acres. That's what we settled on, right? Um, go ahead, Pam. I see you.
Okay. So move to approve with the amendment 4.5 acres.
Okay. So that we have an amendment to the motion.
For residential and for the industrial area.
So
institution.
Must have a minimum contiguous land area of 4.5 acres if all or part is located in the suburban neighborhood character area or in the institutional campus character areas as established in the comp plan.
Yes, that is correct. That, so what Stacy said and, uh, Stacy, were you seconding Pam's motion?
Was clarifying what it should be.
Right. But we need a second.
John seconded.
I seconded.
Oh, seconded.
I will second it. Second.
Okay, that's fine. So Sharon, did you get that language or do you need Stacy to restate it?
I got it, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So now we have an amendment to the motion on the floor. Are there any questions about the amendment? Seeing none, I call the questions signify your support of the amendment by raising your hand because Jim has his hand up. Uh, Sharon, that appears to be unanimous. Anybody opposed? I see none. Sharon, that's unanimous. Now we are back to the amended motion. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? Uh, seeing none, I call the questions signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sharon, that's unanimous.
Paul, can you, uh, present those, uh, presentations to Sharon so we can get those into the formal agenda? And if you could send them to council.
I will, I will do that, Councilman.
And, and go ahead and send it to us as well, please.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Sharon, do you want to introduce the next?
Yes, Mayor. The next item is approval of Flock Group Incorporated Additional Services Agreement. Chief Crokin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm, uh, pleased tonight to present this item, uh, for your consideration. As you know, back about two years ago, we approved a contract with Georgia Power to install some LPR cameras in mainly in the perimeter area to provide uh, those services to us on an ongoing basis. Over the last, uh, couple of years, we've experienced some issues with those cameras. And then we found out not long ago that Georgia Power is no longer going to be running their site view program. And we thought it was in the best interest of the city and this program to change vendors. This is a contract amendment. We already have Flock, uh, providing LPRs in other areas of the city. We want to switch the vendor to Flock. And the reason this is on tonight for your consideration is because, um, we're no longer paying Georgia Power right now. And so we want to, it's a timely issue to get the flock cameras installed in place of the other camera. So we don't have any break in service. And I've, and actually we're going to end up paying less money for this each month, uh, to continue this program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, uh, that you may have.
Okay. Uh, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chief. Um, I have a question. So my memory serves me correct, the, uh, the, the program through Georgia Power, we actually purchased those cameras. It wasn't a lease arrangement or anything like that. And I saw, I saw in the memo that there was a, and I guess a negotiation to get out of the contract to get basically 50% of that back. Do they, what happens to those cameras? Are they, is there any value to them? Are they going back to Georgia Power? Are they?
Yeah, not, uh, not really. They're going to go back to Georgia Power. We're getting half of our deposit, uh, back plus the service that we, uh, over the last, since we've had the cameras installed, we're getting that back as well. So it's almost, uh, a hundred and, let's see exactly how much it is. It's about a hundred and $60,000 that we're getting back. The, the 59,200 is close to that. We don't know the exact number yet. We're still comparing invoices to make sure, but we'll get that money back.
Okay. And so is, is Georgia Power removing the cameras or is Flock doing it as part of his new installation or?
So Georgia Power will take them down after Flock installs their camera. So we have no break in service.
Okay. And, and so the, so I guess that probably asked the question I had because, um, so they won't be going in the same exact locations. Like I know, I know the old contract had issues with, you know, on the same poles and stuff like that.
Some of them will.
They will. Okay.
That same location. That's correct.
Okay. And that's not a, any, any issue with Georgia Power because they're kind of getting out of the game?
No, they're, they're, uh, they fully understand and want to support our transition to the other vendor so that we have no break in service.
Okay. And then, um, I know, I know we have some flat cameras existing. I know, again, if memory serves me correct, when we did the, uh, the, the deal with Georgia Power, uh, I think those were the Genetek cameras and the, and one of the reasons we chose them is it was a seamless integration with the existing systems. Like that's the LPRs that the PD was already using. Um, since we already have an issue with, uh, or I should say some, some cameras with Flock, is this going to be a a seamless integration? Is there going to be any additional IT, um, compatibility issues or anything like that? Any strain on the IT department?
There will be none. This is actually, uh, they provide an off-site platform for us to access. And actually it's going to be, uh, make it even better for officers because we won't have two platforms to log into. It'll just be one, which is the Flock platform.
And, and in essence, the service we're receiving is, is essentially the same as far as what we're able to get out of the, the cameras and, and.
I would, I would say it's better.
Better. Okay. That's great. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Um, any, uh, John?
Thank you, Chief. As far as the, I guess, uh, police department was authorized a certain dollar amount at one point as far as the operation of these cameras. You're getting a refund. You're getting a lower price point. Is there an opportunity to keep the same price point, but improve the number of cameras in the places that are needed?
So, uh, this actually does, uh, right now with Genetek, we have 16 cameras. Flock is going to be able to provide this exact same coverage with less cameras. And so we're going to add some additional cameras, uh, to put in some critical areas. So we're actually adding cameras in this thing, in this, uh, new contract, but we'll be paying less.
Right. And it's the sense that you're paying less. If you add one or two more cameras, does that get you up to the maximum that you were authorized to pay for the cameras? In other words, can you put in one more, two more in order to get to where you were authorized previously?
Yeah, I think, uh, there's an $857 a month difference, uh, in this. We identified the ones that were most critical. We could maybe add one more camera in with this, but I don't know that we have a great need for that at this point in time because we did add some critical ones.
Okay. Uh, final question then, as far as not having stationary, do we have any mobile LPR units that I've seen on police cars previously? Um, maybe, you know, looking, you're looking at the parking lots of the mall and in bad time of year, is there anything we have?
Sure, we do. We have, uh, three mobile units right now and those mobile units are assigned to CRT, our crime response team.
Right. Absolutely. Okay. I just want to make sure that we're maximizing the front funds authorized if appropriate to do so.
Absolutely. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Joe, second by Jim. Chief, I have a quick question. If Georgia Power is getting out of the business, why are we not getting all our money back for the cameras?
Well, we, we did have the service for two years.
Okay.
So we did make use of it. So, uh, I think that was a fair, fair negotiation.
Okay. Um, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, I call the question, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Sharon, that passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor, the next item, number 12, is approval of lobbyist contract. And that's Jay Benicki.
Uh, even in Mayor and Council, um, as all of you know, last year, late in the fall, we put together an RFQ and had a competitive process and chose a new lobbying firm, uh, Taylor English that was effective January 1st. Uh, I think most of you have heard that the three primary contacts we used with that have left that firm and have started their own firm. And they did so after the general assembly and they notified us. Um, with that being said, and us having done the RFQ in basically six months ago, we got together the team with purchasing and legal and all that to take a look at our options. And went with first termination of the original contract since the RFQ was procured with specific names tied to it for the lobbying effort. And, uh, secondly, after that, looked at whether it would be appropriate to either rebid or to extend the contract. And after consideration, we thought the best recommendation for now is to go ahead and renew the contract with the new firm, the same three individuals, then terminate strategies for the rest of this year. It's subject to authorization to be renewed every year, but with federal funding coming down the pipe, uh, we felt it best not to change horses midstream on this. Um, and with that, uh, any questions from council?
I don't see any. Uh, Tom.
Uh, excuse me. Uh, yeah, Jay, thank you. Um, I'm, as you, you already noted this, and I'm sure you guys have done all of the due diligence from the legal side as far as getting out of one and going into another. Uh, my only question is, uh, since the principles of this new firm were associated with our prior, uh, lobbying firm, is there any issue with the non-compete of them leaving that could affect the quality of service that the city will receive? Are we going to get tied up in the, in a legal mess that we don't want to be involved with because they are essentially leaving their old firm and taking clients with them? Are we, are we safe?
Uh, and there should be no issues with it.
Okay. That's, that's basically my only question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Move by Joe, the, the, the move by John.
Second.
Second by Pam. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the questions signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, this item passes unanimously, Sharon. And, uh, just Joe, while we were talking, the lobbyists texted that it had passed. The bill, the governor signing, signed the bill about cybersecurity discussions and executive session. Thank you. All right.
Mayor, the next item of discussion is update on face mask ordinance.
Let's see. Okay. Hold on. Thank you, Sharon. All right. In August 2020, we passed a face mask ordinance to address the COVID-19 public health crisis. We renewed it multiple times until November when we did it for six months. We renewed it for six months. We were permitted to, to do, take this action under the govern, governor's emergency declaration as long as cases in DAB remained above 100 cases per 100,000 residents. Today, that number dropped to 107. Barring something unexpected, I predict by the end of this week, if not sooner, the number of cases will be 100 or lower. At that point or on May 30th, the DAB mask ordinance expires. Businesses and organizations have the rights and the responsibility to make their own rules for their properties. Many businesses will likely continue to require face masks to enter their premises for the near future. This is no different than no shoes, no shirts, no ser, no service requirement that has existed for decades. You, your friends, your family members and your neighbors may continue to wear masks long after they are required. This is okay. We all have our own comfort levels as we enter this phase of the health crisis. There is much evidence that the pandemic is easing locally. The number of new cases in Dunwoody continues to drop. The test positivity rate for DAB is dropping as well. And the number of people who have received the COVID-19 vaccine continues to increase. What happens next is totally up to us. Stay home if you don't feel well. Avoid large crowds indoors. Wash your hands and see COVID testing if you are concerned about your potential exposure. Finally, a reminder that nothing has been particularly easy this past year. This phase of the pandemic may be the most confusing of all. I ask that everyone continue to give local businesses and each other the space and grace to navigate this time. And with that, um, I'll take any questions from council. Okay. I don't see any.
Well, yes.
Go ahead, Pam.
Um, so outside, let's say farmer's market.
Right.
Um, that is a DHA event. So it's up to then the DHA decide if they continue to mask or not, correct? That's not a city decision, even though it's in our park.
Right. So and in fact, this, this Eric made it make decisions on the building because we own the building and he's the administrator in the building for what we require for court and other city meetings as we go along. But once we go below 100, the city cannot um, have a mask mandate, though everyone, sorry about that, though everyone is, uh, every business and organization is allowed to have their own rules. Anything else?
Mayor, if I may, the, the courts are, uh, controlled by the chief justice's order. And we'll have to follow that order. It's probably going to be more strict.
Okay. There's that. So thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I, we had the arts festival this weekend and some, you know, it all went okay, I think. Um, anybody else? Seeing none, um, that was my update on Facebook's, uh, public comments. Brittany, do you want to check? I mean, not Brittany, Ginger, I'm sorry. Do you want to check online?
If you'd like to speak in public comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom application. I see no hands raised at this time.
And John or somebody want to see it?
There's nobody in the room, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you.
Wait, Billy's here.
Um, all right. Eric, do you have any comments? City manager comments?
No fur, no further comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Council comments? Anybody have anything? Stacy?
So we have a very exciting event in our city on Thursday, May 13th at 7:00 PM. The first official concert will be held in our amphitheater. Hey, um, Dunwoody High School Band will be performing their end of year concert along with Peachtree Middle School Bands. So please take a blanket, take a chair. The concert begins at 7 o'clock in our Brooklyn Amphitheater. And the second concert in our Brooklyn Amphitheater will be Saturday, May 15th at 1 o'clock when the orchestra and chorus will have their end of year concerts. So, so thrilled that we can offer that to our, our citizens, our students who work so hard. There will be senior recognitions and our kids get to perform. I'd also like to wish good luck. We have eight DHS boys and eight DHS girls who qualified for the state track and field championships this, this weekend. Good luck to them. So we have a concert.
Awesome. So exciting. Anybody else? All right. I do. I have a couple of things. First, Chief, it is National Police Week and we, as always, we want to thank the department for your outstanding service, for their outstanding service. We appreciate greatly everything that they do for our community. And we are looking forward to more events where we can increase visibility and citizen interactions and community, uh, events. Hank was, I believe, at the Arts Festival this, uh, yesterday. Um, we saw him Friday night there. Um, and I know the police dogs will attract conversation and, um, more interactions. Um, also speaking of the Arts Festival, I want to thank, um, Rotary and everyone else who volunteered and helped. Our city staff, Parks Department particularly for all the tremendous effort they made in making it happen. Um, as well as, um, the police and everyone else who made it possible. Um, and I think, and Stacy, thank you for initiating the concerts in the park with the high school. I think that's a we really appreciate that opportunity and, um, it was a great idea, great thinking. Anybody else? Seeing none, we have no executive session, right, Eric? Executive session, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Jim.
Second.
Second by Pam, y'all are awfully slow, you must want to stay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, raise your hand, whatever, anybody object? No, Sharon, that's unanimous. Thank you all, have a good night.